We haven't even said anything and it's getting so quiet. I'd like to have Nadine Hogate come up here. Prior to the start of our city council meeting, we occasionally get the opportunity to recognize one of our citizens and you need to get right up there in the center, Nadine. Oh, right. We have a citizen here to recognize for exemplary service recognition. And whereas Nadine Hogate has filled a long-term and productive citizen advisory role in the city of Des Moines citizen participation process through her 21-year appointment to the Des Moines Neighborhood Revitalization Board advocating for and encouraging resident involvement to support neighborhood improvements in Des Moines. And whereas on February 19th, 1990, the Des Moines City Council approved the Housing Improvement and Neighborhood Revitalization Program and launched an innovative public-private partnership in six project areas that would involve neighborhood residents working with city staff to develop neighborhood action plans that targeted public and private funds for street improvements, new affordable housing, and home improvements for low and moderate income families. And whereas on March 26th, 1990, Nadine Hogate was appointed to serve on the Neighborhood Advisory Board as representative for the low to moderate income neighborhoods in the fourth ward of the city. In her capacity as a board member, she frequently served as the chair, held other offices, and served on numerous subcommittees during her tenure for the purpose of furthering affordable housing, clean and safe neighborhoods, and to ensure that residents have a say in how their neighborhoods are developed and maintained. And therefore be it resolved that in appreciation of her dedicated service to the community, her steadfast engagement with neighborhood organizations citywide, and her genuine interest in improving the quality of life for residents, young and old, in our city, the city recognizes Nadine Hogate as an exemplary citizen of Des Moines and for the range of her community involvement is a reminder to all of our residents of our obligation to be proactive in making sure Des Moines remains a place where all residents can enjoy the quality of life they seek. And for that, not only do we have this, but Nadine, we have a key gift.
I did want to say a couple of things. You know, I didn't come in this thing to be whoopee-whoopee. I came in it because...
Did you define whoopee-whoopee?
Because the value of my house was in the crapper. And I said, "Somebody's got to do something." And since this is my own little piece of Des Moines here, I guess I better do it. And I guess all of you got on board and decided the same thing, that we had a job to do. We have had wonderful support from Polk County Supervisors and from the Des Moines City Council and a manager who managed to keep us going and not get... Where'd he go? Keep up the good work, kids. I'm going to still be messing around out in my neighborhood, but you, the neighbors, the whole network of people in the city of Des Moines who gave their time, gave their money, gave their sweat and their tears, look what the city we've got. Look at this town. Isn't this a wonderful town? We're one of a kind in the United States, and we know it. Let's keep it that way. Do I have to take that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you all for attending. Now, we have another moment. Rudy, you're here. We have a special Human Rights Month, and I'd like to have Rudy Sims quickly come up and tell us what's going on this month, and then we've got a proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, December 10th, will mark the 63rd International Human Rights Day, and our celebration in Des Moines is scheduled to take place at the Iowa State Historical Building. Being on a Saturday for a change gives us an opportunity to have a more expansive program of entertainment, dance, music, arts, education as a part of that as well. There are some handouts and a schedule of events right here in the council chambers will be posted outside. Please take a handbill if you're interested, and we hope that you'll turn out. The mayor, of course, will be introducing the governor as well as participating in the social group.
Thank you, that's enough.
But the program will be kicked off at 10 o'clock with the lion dance, then you'll hear from the mayor and the governor. But throughout the afternoon, throughout the day, throughout part of the afternoon until 2:00 P.M., a wonderful, entertaining, family-focused activity is planned. So please join us.
All right, Rudy. Quickly, we have a proclamation that recognizes this event and its creation. Whereas on December 10th, 1948, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights was proclaimed and adopted by the General Assembly of the United Nations. And whereas the city of Des Moines established the Des Moines Human Rights Commission in 1954 to protect the people of Des Moines from unfair treatment in employment, housing, public accommodation, and municipal practices. And whereas the theme of International Human Rights Day 2011 is awareness through strength of voice. And whereas the 57 years of citizens of Des Moines have had and do continue to show compassion and concern for the rights of others different from themselves. And some human rights defenders are famous, but most are not. They are active in our community, working along, and in groups. And whereas, Human Rights Day 2011 will salute the achievements of human rights defenders and emphasize the primary role government plays in enabling and promoting human rights. And whereas, the anniversary of the International Declaration of Human Rights is an occasion for all of us to recommit to the vision of universal human rights, which remains as relevant today as it was 63 years ago. And whereas, Des Moines city leaders continue to recognize the need for appreciation of diversity and protection of fair treatment for all citizens and people at all times. And now, therefore, I, the mayor, along with the Des Moines City Council, express our continued commitment to living out the principles of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in our community and do hereby proclaim the month of December 2011 as Human Rights Month and December 10th, 2011, as Human Rights Day. Rudy, thank you, and keep up the great work.
If you want to make sure you have members of the committee responding to yours for the photo?
Everybody that's here that's on the commission's orders, we're going to take a quick photo. All right. Now, Marcy Raftall. And everybody else.
Yes.
Talk to us about the holiday food baskets.
Once again, the Des Moines Community Action Agency, which serves low-income residents of the city of Des Moines, is taking donations from people in the community, schools, businesses, churches, to sort or to pack for 1,000 food baskets for the holiday. Each of the food baskets contains a three-to-five-day supply of nutritious food for each household. I brought with me Shannon Vills and Barb Hildebrand, who are Des Moines Community Action staff, who are managing the program from the Pastoral Center at Sixth and Grand. I'd also like to thank each of the directors of city departments for their assistance with staff and other things to help us with this program. And our thanks brought to the community who have donated food for the program.
All right. We have a proclamation. Quickly, the holiday season is an opportunity for Des Moines residents to share their good fortune with neighbors who are less fortunate. And whereas, as families gather for the holidays, meals are an important part of the family celebrations. And whereas, the city of Des Moines wishes to help as many families as possible to enjoy nutritious food during the holiday season. And whereas, the city of Des Moines will conduct the holiday food program and encourage all Des Moines residents to contribute to this effort and to provide eligible families with nutritious food for the holiday season. And whereas, the city of Des Moines wishes to express gratitude to all those contributing to the success of this program and making our city a caring and responsive community. Now, therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim December 5th to 16th, 2011, is Holiday Food Baskets Weeks, and I urge all of our citizens to join in this worthy effort. Thank you so much for all your work. All right. For council meeting, start in just a minute. We're going to open the meeting for the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board. I will ask the clerk to take the roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a forum.
Item two is approving the utility allowance schedules for the public housing in Section 8 is Board Communication Number 11-743. Is there anybody in the audience to make any comment or needs any clarification on that? Board? Anybody?
I'll move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Item passes. Could we have a motion adjourned, please?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you said adjourned. We've done our special presentations prior to the start of our city council meeting. We will have an invocation by our own city council member, Hallie Grease, and we would ask those who participate with us this evening that you would stand at this...
Please join me in a word of prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, we just want to come before you and thank you for the opportunity to meet with you, our God, and petition you. We invoke that you would be with us here tonight. God, we want to pray for our leaders. God, we want to pray for our president, for our congress, that you would give them wisdom and discernment in their decision-making. God, for our governor, our legislature, city councils around the metro area. God, just that you would protect our leaders and that you would give them wisdom in their decision-making. We pray that you would be with us in our meeting tonight. God, give us discernment and humility as we make decisions that affect our city and our citizens. We just ask all these things in your name. Amen.
All right, ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman? Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a forum.
Right, item two is to... For the agenda as presented and/or as amended, anybody have anything on that? What item is... Are we pulling 37?
Mr. Mayor, I think I added late, but I would like to pull 32 and 34.
Okay. That would probably be on the consent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I think those are... I've got those pulled.
Okay.
All right. Item 37 is not on the consent, but it is being pulled.
You mean it's being... It's not going to be discussed?
Right. Then withdrawn.
Yeah. Item 36. There are people in the audience. Right.
Mr. Mayor, my name's Paul Ebrikson, the President and General Manager of KCCTV.
Right.
A communique was made with you this afternoon via email. And I tried to make a phone call to you, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to speak with you. But if I heard you correctly, item 37 is going...
Being withdrawn.
Being withdrawn?
Right.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You bet. Okay. So could we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or amended? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda, which tonight are items three through 34. Item five, council member Moore and I vote no. Item 32 and 34, council member Meyer wishes to speak. And item 33, council member Grease wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anybody would like to either pull for clarification or discussion? Any others? Counsel? Seeing none?
Move the consent.
Move the ballots to consent.
Seven yes.
All right. That takes us to item 32. Item 32 is an ordinance second consideration on the rezoning of property in the vicinity of Southeast 8th Street and Indianola Avenue, Southern Meadows Apartments from limited R2 multifamily residential and R160 low-density single-family residential to PUD planned unit development. Council member Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Great project. In order to move it along more quickly, I'd like to waive the third reading, so move 32 with the additional... With the addition of waiving the third reading. So I'll move 32.
Any discussion? Come in the audience? Seeing none?
Seven yes.
Item 33 is on the rezoning of 5300 Franklin Avenue, the Franklin Field Senior Apartments, LLLP. John Morrow's the agent, from R160 one-family low-density residential to PUD planned unit development. Council member Grease.
My intention was the same as Mr. Meyer's to waive the sec... Or, excuse me, waive the second and third reading on this one unless there's any opposition.
Any discussion? Comment from council?
Seven yes.
All right. Item 34, which is to mend the tiff in the Southeast Egger Business Urban Renewal Area. Council member Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Unless somebody's here to speak, I'd like to do the same. Move the second reading and waive the third.
Seven yes.
All right. That completes the consent agenda. Next item is item 35. Item 35 is from council members Coleman and Grease to speak regarding an honorary street name. Who wants to go first?
I might start and let Hallie make the motion. We've been approached by the Athletic Direct Department, Sandy Hatfield Club, about a possible renaming of a short segment of Forest Avenue. I have provided them the city council policy on renaming streets, and what it essentially does is it pushes people towards an honorary designation. The name of the street doesn't change. There's not, you know, problems of, you know, public safety and post office issues. But I have told them that I would very much support referring their request to the planning and zoning, which is what our policy says we will do. I've talked to the staff in the planning department, and Field Delafield tells me that they could take it up in early January and return with a recommendation for the council. The idea is to name it after an employee who has been with the university for sixty-five years in either a paid position or nearly a full-time volunteer position, and it would be a nice thing for them to do. It's their goal to honor him. I think he's in his mid-nineties now. I was told that he was walking around the campus the other day, probably hard at work, but they would like to do it during the basketball season of having a little unveiling, so, Hallie.
And I would be glad to make that, that motion. The gentleman is Paul Morrison. He's known as Mr. Drake, and not every student who goes through Drake knows him personally, but everyone knows of Paul. I mean, he's just a staple on campus, so I would gladly move that. I don't know if the correct motion would be to refer it to planning and zoning for their review as soon as possible to bring back to council or to the city manager.
Mr. Grease, Councilmember Morrison, is it your intent to approve this item?
Yes.
If you would simply make that motion and direct it back to me and the city attorney, and we'll, whatever action is necessary, if you need further action here, we'll bring it back to you. If we need to send it to PNC, I'm not sure, given your direction here, that it needs to go through a whole lot of steps. So we'll try to do it quickly. I think there's some, I get the sense of urgency from what you're saying.
I would agree. I would like to see us just, if we could just vote on it tonight so that we can just move forward with it, because there is a sense of urgency on this, from what I understand.
If that's possible, that would certainly be my motion.
Any further discussion? Been moved?
Seven yes.
All right, item thirty-six, Councilmember Brian Meyer to speak regarding the following. Brian, let's just start with A, speeding on East Army Post Road from Southeast Thirty-Sixth Street to the bypass.
Thanks, Mayor. I think one of the reasons I brought this up is there's been a couple of accidents in that stretch, and one of the things that the neighborhood and, and the businesses along there asked me to do was take a look at signage along there, along this stretch. People come off the bypass and they're going quite fast and, or coming from Des Moines onto the bypass, and right there is Avondale Hospital, and I met with them last week, and so the speeding part, I think PD has really been aggressive on doing patrols out there. I almost encountered them myself one day, and the, but one thing that was concerning to the folks there was signage. Is there something we can do to sort of warn people that there's going to be turns into, into the Avondale Pet Hospital? That'd be very helpful, or something to sort of make sure people know there's a possible turn there, so. With that, I'll move thirty-six A with the, ask the city manager to come back with recommendations on signage and enforcing.
Okay, item's been moved. Is there any discussion by anyone in the audience on this item? Yes, sir. Into the podium.
We're still on the signs, right?
No, this is, well, this is speeding on Army Post Road.
Next item is the signs.
Stay right.
Okay. Seeing no one? Item's been moved?
Seven yes.
All right, item two is signs in the city right-of-way. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. This was brought to me again by Mr. Penns, who's here, and Mr. Swift. I know this is a continuing battle. I know we've had some discussion with the city attorney today on actually enforcing the ordinance, which would be good. A couple of years ago, we, we actually did a case against the IFix faded headlight guy. He has really slowed down the sign spam. In order to stay on top of it, I think we need to sort of double back and do some more enforcement on these signs that are in the right-of-way. And I know there's three people here tonight, so I'll turn it over to them to speak, the three Ms. Mel, Mike, and Mark.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Mark White. I'm active in my neighborhood association, but I'm not here tonight representing Indianola Hills. I have a copy of a letter here with me tonight that Rick Clark wrote to Indianola Hills in 2005 regarding temporary signs and attempting to give us some guidance as far as what we might want to do or not want to do if we decided to pick up some signs on the, on the right-of-way. I think it would be helpful if this letter or something similar to it were reissued to all the neighborhood associations to let them know what they might do and what they might not if they choose to pick up signs.
Mark, can we get a copy of that, or is that your original copy?
No, no. Original's in a safe place. It's so safe, I couldn't find it today. You want this?
I'll just receive and file the letter and.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, County, members of the council. My name is Mel Penns. I live at 210 East Bundy Avenue, south side of Des Moines. I'm the president of the Somerset Neighborhood Association, and I'm also very happy to serve as a volunteer and be the Ward Four representative on the city's zoning board of adjustment. As Brian referenced, I had talked to him about the issue of illegal temporary signage here in the city, and I'm pleased to have a few moments tonight to speak to you about that issue. I've been involved with my neighborhood association for the last eight years, and in my capacity as an officer and in working with other neighborhood groups and residents throughout the city, one of the biggest issues that I see that neighborhood leaders have, for any neighborhood that has one of our larger commercial corridors in it, has been the aesthetics, appearance, and vitality of those corridors. And issue by issue, you've helped us with policies to work on those, whether it's a used car overlay district, whether it's working with the departments for street improvements or curb repair, or zoning violations. But it seems like we've had one issue that's kind of been hard to tackle, and that's been the issue of these illegal signs. So I always say a picture's worth a thousand words, so what I want to do is just give you a brief presentation here. Just some fundamentals, which you may all know. Section 134 of the municipal code entitled zoning deals with the regulation and the placement of all signs, whether it's a Hy-Vee sign or EMC insurance sign, and portable signs as a whole are prohibited. Now, there's some minor exceptions. Your campaign signs for council are okay, as long as they're on private property and you remove them after the election. Real estate signs, temporary signs are okay on the parcel that's for sale, but I'm not here to give you the legal interpretation. But off-premise signs are generally prohibited, as well as signs on public property, which is our street right-of-ways. The zoning enforcement officer enforces illegal signage on private property. If there's, you know, the wrong kind of signs in front of Hy-Vee on their property, zoning enforcement deals with that. Illegal signage on public right-of-ways along our streets, I don't know if it's through policy or what have you, but that's been assigned to the traffic and transportation division and engineering to deal with that. We've had a few cases in the past, Brian referenced, the IFix faded headlights guy. That, that was dealt with and set a good precedent, but it seems like we still have some historic ongoing violations of this, and I'd like to see if we could get a handle on these, what I call sign spammers. And again, picture's worth a thousand words. These photos were just taken last week, Army Post and Southwest Ninth. You've seen these elsewhere. Here's County Line Road and US 69, Lose Weight at Nutrishop on South 50th Street in West Des Moines. Look through the intersection, right in front of the yellow light, you'll see their other sign on the other side, so you don't miss it. Here's a bunch of We Buy Houses Rent to Own. I know there's always going to be somebody putting up a little sign for something, I get that, but the rent to own, whoever these people are, they're pretty dramatic. They don't pay to get the sign printed, they have good penmanship, but they're all over the city with these things. Here's how you get high-speed internet, too bad half the number's missing. Apparently, the sign's been there a long time. This is at the Quick Trip, Southwest Ninth and Army Post. And my favorite, if you haven't seen this, you're not paying attention to the road in front of you. This is at McKinley and Southwest Ninth. The guy that puts these up does this all over the metro, all over central Iowa. So what's the big deal about this? Who cares? Well, the quality of life in our communities is really exhibited by what our city looks like, especially our major corridors, because our streets are welcome to anybody that visits our city. We all know that with Fluor and Gateway West, that's fine, but people come to the city from different areas, and when they come here to set up a business or buy a house, how our city looks really affects their interest in investing with us. I think this visual pollution of these signs detracts from our community character, and it's kind of the first crack in the broken window theory in urban planning, which I don't want to get into detail, but if your property's falling apart, then you don't take care of it, the neighbor doesn't take care of it, it's pretty soon the whole neighborhood, and sometimes entire communities go downhill. As Nadine Hogate said, she got involved because things weren't looking too good in her area, and she cared about the value of her house. I'm the same way. That's a major concern, but you know what? This form of advertising also competes directly with our local businesses here that do the right thing, advertise how they're supposed to comply with the sign ordinances, and they help our local media and our local economy. So what have you done to work on this? I think zoning enforcement has worked well on private property. I give them a lot of credit. I do know if I call to ask or complain about something, it gets followed up. I don't know that enforcement of sign ordinances along our streets has been working as well. Traffic and transportation does a great job working on our city streets and designing intersections and all that stuff, but they're not designed to be a code enforcement department, and I think this gets them into some areas where they maybe don't have the expertise and the skill to deal with, with some of these SCOF laws. We had a case, it was actually '09, I have '08 up here, IFix faded headlights guy, all over Skip's, Skip's side of town, Brian's side of town. We took him to Small Claims Court. The city said, if we take him to court, you'll have to testify. Do you want to do that? I said, you bet. If you're going, I'll be there shoulder to shoulder. Got a fine against the guy? He went away immediately. But since that time, I don't think we've had effective enforcement, and I hope you can work on that by improving some of that. I'll buzz along here. I like to end with a sense of humor. I did not put this sign up. People in Richmond, Virginia put this sign up because their city had failed to actively take a role in enforcing this ordinance, so they decided to have fun with it. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, otherwise I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
You bet.
Hi, good afternoon. Mike Swift, Swift Auto Salvage in Des Moines, Trails and Auto Salvage in Des Moines. You've probably all got emails from me, very vigilant on the sign issue. Don't have a problem with legal signs, but I have a problem with the illegal signs. I've probably collected, over the last four years, probably a thousand signs myself. It's now become a game for my nieces and nephews, family, friends. I have a niece that's a schoolteacher that stopped her school bus one day just to get out and get a sign for Uncle Mike. So I just find the sign issue, I know Brian, newspaper article about Brian a couple of years ago, it was refreshing to see somebody else bothered about these signs. We all know who it is. I've sent some information to the city on who it is and, and even hired my own private investigator to find out who these people are putting these signs out. As a business owner, I have to go by certain signs. I have to come by certain variances myself. I have a sign at the end of our street that I can't paint a different color, I can't change it because of, you know, a non-conforming sign that can't be changed. I would just like to see enforcement beefed up on these signs. I'm just, like this morning, at, I live in Urbandale, and I picked up a sign this morning. I have four in the back of my truck now, so I'm, I want to take up a different hobby besides collecting signs. So I don't have a presentation like Mel did, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to make comment on this? How about counsel? Brett?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Lester on enforcement efforts in the past and enforcement efforts currently and moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer, Mayor, City Council. I'm pleased to report that we have been moving forward, albeit probably more slowly than all of us would like, with enforcement on, on this issue. There were two cases that were filed today. We had a little snafu with the check, or they would have been filed actually last week before this matter was brought up, but we don't mind the encouragement from Mr. Penns, and in fact, appreciate it. We have two cases already going to court, as I said. Those were filed, should be served shortly, hopefully. We have a couple of additional cases we're going to go down. The signers get more and more clever as we go along. We've run into a number of them where they're apparently using track, excuse me, track phones now, so that there's no name associated with the phone. Makes it a lot more difficult. We can't just prosecute a phone number. We don't have, as Mr. Penns accurately points out, we don't have staff who can conduct some kind of sting operation. We track down who legally owns the phone and the number and is placing the signs, and that's how we prosecute them. That's what we're doing so far. We are going to try to make use of subpoena power here in the next week or so with a couple of additional cases where we found phone numbers that are assigned to a particular phone company, but our service that we use, which is Accurate and Lexis, are not able to get us a name, so we're going to go to Verizon and try to compel them to give us the name. That's my understanding that to date, they've not agreed to give that to us voluntarily, but will with subpoena, so we'll make an effort to move that forward as well. We're mindful of the signs and the issues that they create, and we'll continue to do that, and we'll work with the manager and with engineering to move all of these prosecutions ahead.
I would ask, part of the motion will be, the motion may refer to, to the city manager and the city attorney, but I would be mindful of, I think both Mike and Mel mentioned that they have possible evidence that could be used moving forward, so I'd like you guys to maybe get their contact information and work with them on the evidence that they're able to possibly present in small claims and.
Certainly, we will do that.
That'll be the motion moving forward.
I want to thank everybody for coming down and talking, speaking about this this evening. I know that, you know, years ago, Bob and the rest of us that were on planning and zoning, we worked on signs of all kinds, but this certainly is the, as you pointed out, Mel, the most visual of pollution that seems to just crop up and grow in odd places at times, day or night, 365 days a year. So I appreciate everybody's work on this, and I will certainly fully support your, your work on this. Brian?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll move thirty-six B and ask that, what was previously asked?
Seven yes.
All right, that takes us now to item thirty-eight, which is a receipt that the Des Moines Water Works adopted budget for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2012. Is there anyone here to speak on that item?
Mr. Mayor, if there's nobody to speak on it, we received the summaries, the very brief summaries, and I guess what, if you look at some of the swings between the actual and what was the re-estimated, I'd like to ask that we get back to them and ask the staff to give us what were the assumptions used in putting the budget together. I know that it was, it was approved by their board, but based upon the rate increases and the, really, the little amount of public debate that there has been, I'd just like to have that information, particularly as we're dealing with budget issues. I'll move.
I also would say, and while we forward that and ask the staff and the board over there to react to that request, I do want to thank them for working with us in their departments on a number of collaborative efforts, and let's continue to direct our staff and theirs to work diligently together and to address some of those, those items, so. Appreciate it. Any comment? Anybody in the audience?
Well, my concern is if anybody within our departments looked this over very closely, Rick, do we, we try to analyze it.
Well, Mr. Mahaffey, councilmembers, we do. Alan McKinley from my office attends some of the finance committees of the Water Works Department, and I'm sure has some insight, which he would be happy to share with all of you, but we'll do the analysis that you suggested and get back to you with our thoughts and whatever we discover in that process. I understand the reason for your question, and we, we too are concerned about it, and we'll make sure we get the information you've asked for.
Thank you. Item's been moved? Item's been moved.
Seven, yes?
All right. Let's move quickly to item 46, which is receipt of report from the city manager regarding the shop and save 1829 Sixth Avenue as a consideration of Class E liquor license renewal with a C beer and a B wine for the shop and save at 1829 Sixth Avenue. Mr. Manager?
Actually, Mayor and counsel, I'm going to have city attorney Jeff Lester take this. He's really done the lion's share of the work in negotiating the agreement with the property owner. I think Jeff, perhaps you can overview it best.
Sure. Thank you, Rick. Mayor, councilmembers, we had a meeting last week with the owner, his council, and a number of representatives from the neighborhood on this issue. The meeting was very cordial. It was a helpful exchange and communication of ideas and issues, some of which it was apparent that the owner was not familiar with. There were a number of suggestions that were exchanged that ultimately culminated in the agreement that you see before you, and I apologize because I was discussing some issues with the mayor earlier. So I do have copies of the agreement that are actually executed now for your review, the long and the short of it. And I do want to emphasize to council that the neighborhood group did participate in this. They actively participated in the discussion. They actively participated in the suggestions for the agreement, and they actually actively participated in the review and editing and revisions to the agreement. And I believe that they are all in accord with what's gone on. Just to very quickly give you an overview, a number of the items have already been completed, including a signed trespass letter for the Des Moines Police Department to use to help keep undesirable elements who are causing a lot of the issues off of the property. They're going to place no loitering signs and post Iowa code no trespassing as well. They've installed an additional outdoor camera. They're going to staff an additional employee, and if that isn't satisfactory, then they're looking to hire security personnel or off-duty police officers for the hours of 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thursdays through Saturday. And again, they're going to work with the Neighborhood Association on that to resolve any issues. They've installed an additional trash bin in the parking lot. They're going to instruct their employees to police the lot for both trash and for people that shouldn't be there. There is an agreement to remove the payphones if that's determined to be necessary. The owner or designee is going to attend the Riverbend Neighborhood Association monthly meetings, and delivery trucks will be rerouted within the area when they're delivering so as not to obstruct traffic. Employees will call the police, and that includes for violations of the city noise ordinances, and they will post a noise ordinance sign. We're hopeful that this will alleviate many of the problems that the neighborhood had and that the business has experienced. I believe everyone that was in attendance at the meeting was satisfied with the level of cooperation. But again, we will monitor to make sure that we are obtaining compliance with this and work with the Neighborhood Association to ensure compliance.
Jeff, the one thing I noticed, I drove by there again yesterday just looking at to see what was going on, and they still have the liquor sign up there. I mean, it still comes across as a liquor store. It says shop and save, and then over in letters that are even bigger than the shop and save letters, it says liquor. Is that legal?
Their advertising, one of their products, it's probably, I'm sure they would point to, for example, Walgreens that, or grocery stores that'll have pharmacy liquor on the outside of their building. That actually was not one of the items that we discussed. We can certainly broach that subject with the owner and their council. They've been very amenable and very agreeable to things we've suggested so far, so we can certainly suggest that to them as well.
Okay. I guess I would explore it at a minimum. I don't, it's not legal. I mean, you know, if they're in compliance, there's something you can do, but, I mean, when you drive by, it looks like it's a liquor store.
Well, and, you know, they're, one of the things that we discussed with the owner, the owner is here, I see, out in the audience, one of the things that we discussed is that they're very close to their level currently at 50% mark, and that will move to 60% in 2013, I believe. So they're going to have to make some adjustments to their business model to continue being licensed, and that may be one of the things that he wants to look at in terms of advertisement, and we'll certainly point that out.
Okay.
Any other comments? I think not. Anybody in the audience? We have a motion to...
Can I, I know there's some people from the neighborhood, or is everybody comfortable with this? Anybody want to speak on behalf of you?
Mike Hildebrand, 410 Franklin Avenue, 200 feet away from the store. I'm also the Riverbend Neighborhood Board President. I agree with the city attorney. The meeting was very cordial. The owners and the manager were there, very receptive to all the suggestions. They'd actually executed some of the suggestions in advance, so I was very comfortable with what they proposed, and what we proposed, what the city proposed, what the business had already executed and were willing to do. So we are very satisfied. We are going to work directly with them on any concerns. If we need to, we will escalate with the city, and then in 2013, we'll revisit the 60-40. And I do also want to thank the mayor, city council, and the city for working and taking this on and immediately taking care of the issue. I appreciate everything that was done, and I appreciate the businessmen stepping up and taking responsibility. Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'm Roger Thompson, Vice President of the Riverbend Association. Not only did I like this agreement, we would also like to offer that up to the other neighborhoods as a template for problems in other areas. I think it would be good to really look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
And just based on my conversations with the neighborhood, I'll move item 46A. Our attorney mentioned that the neighborhood was actively involved in the discussions, and I have no doubt with these folks that they'll continue to be very active in making sure they stay on top of it. And Mike, to your comments about the council, we're still supportive of what you're doing. And we just want to thank you as a neighborhood for being active in your neighborhood and helping bring this to our attention, so thank you.
All right. Let's open the hearings at 5:06. First hearing item is item 39. It's on appeal from James Pratt of 10 Maple, number 240 of Nevada, Iowa, of the administrative hearing officer's decision regarding his dog. Mr. Pratt in the audience? Mr. Pratt?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am the owner of Chloe, the black and white female pit bull. She was deemed to be put down. We had a hearing a while ago, and the basis of the hearing, the decision made was that the situation was, two police officers had came to my residence. I was not home, and they went into my residence without a warrant, and my dog had bit one of the police officers. And the decision that the hearing officer made, she had said that inside the residence, the dog was held by Ms. Martinez, and when they came in, she was so aggressive that she pulled away from Ms. Martinez and bit the police officer. And at the time of the hearing, Ms. Martinez was not available to be here. Today, she is here, and she can speak on the matter herself, as to her own account of it. But at the time, Ms. Martinez was outside the door with the police officers. When the police officers came in the door, they went in first, Ms. Martinez came in behind them. The dog had already bit the police officer before she had ever entered the room. And that's the decision based on what the hearing officer had found, that why they were going to euthanize my dog. Because it says here, "And the dangerous animal under your guidance's definitions cannot be controlled or restrained by the owner at the time of the attack or during the occurrence." And at the time, she wasn't held by Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez wasn't even in the residence. She was with the police officers outside. And with that, that's why I appealed the decision, is because there was nobody there to restrain my dog. She was home. I was not there, and the officers went into my residence without a warrant, and my dog was there. She's a dog, and she was protecting her home. She didn't know who was coming in, that you were coming in aggressively, and she reacted to it. Nobody was there to restrain her. Ms. Martinez is sitting right over there, who was with the cops. We had the cops brought to the house, as a matter of fact. And on that, I'll let you speak to her if you wish.
Well, I think that unfortunately, we need to hear, you know, your comments on it, but I don't think we can present any new evidence, given the circumstances, having already had a hearing. But I think that we ought to have the hearing Sergeant Rataba come up and quickly go over some of the details. But we certainly appreciate your comments. Does any of the council have any questions that they would like to...
I have a question.
Address Mr. Pratt. Yes?
Mr. Pratt, you were talking about the one instance where the police officer was bit, but what about the other issues where the other dog was killed?
The other incident, when I moved to Des Moines, I came from Story County, which you didn't have to have license, didn't have to have tags. I came down here, I got her license tagged, and I had to have her on a leash of six feet or less, accompanied by an adult. She was under all of them rules and regulations. And at the time, my mother had taken her outside to go to the bathroom on her leash with her tags, and another dog came up aggressively and bit my mom, and my dog reacted to that and attacked the other dog.
The Yorkie came up and bit your mother?
My mom had to go to the hospital over that. She had severe bites, and even in the report, it says, the doctor said bites from a small type dog on my mom's hand.
Okay.
Any other questions?
She bit your mother on her hand, and she reached down to...
The other dog did.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other dog attacked my mom, bit her hand.
But did she, did your mother reach down to pet the dog or something?
I was not there. All I know is what I read in the report is that my mom suffered bite wounds from, the other dog was off-leash, came up to my dog, and the other owner of the dog came up, kicked the dog. And I don't know if, I was not there, so I cannot speak personally, so I don't know if the other dog reacted to that, and then my dog reacted. But anyway, my mom was bit by the other dog, and sadly, but it's true, the other dog ended up dying over the incident.
Although it says in the information we have that the injuries were consistent with the bite of a large breed dog.
No, my mom was bit by a small breed dog. It's in there.
I'm just telling you what it says here.
There's another form there, where it's, the doctor...
Sergeant Rataba with the Police Department, excuse me.
On September 26, the police officers were at Mr. Pratt's residence on some sort of a dispute or disturbance. They were in his apartment. Ms. Martinez had control of the dog. She was instructed to keep the dog away from the police officers. The dog pulled away from her, bit a police officer in the leg. After that incident, Mr. Pratt's dog was put under quarantine, standard practice. The dog was, because of its breed, Mr. Pratt was served a vicious dog letter. He had the opportunity to appeal. If he didn't feel the dog met the criteria, he didn't appeal. A lot of the information that he's presenting now never came to light at that point. On October 25, Mr. Pratt's dog was being walked on a leash by his mother. Another dog owned by somebody else came up to Mr. Pratt's dog and sniffed Mr. Pratt's dog. Then Mr. Pratt's dog proceeded to bite and kill the other dog. During the bite incident, a neighbor, unconnected with everybody involved, heard the disturbance or heard the, I'm sure, a lot of people yelling and screaming, I'm assuming, he came over to offer assistance, tried to pry open Mr. Pratt's dog's mouth to get the victim dog out. He sustained a torn skin on his finger. Also during the bite incident with Mr. Pratt's dog, the victim dog owner tried to get, rescue her dog, and was bit by Mr. Pratt's dog, the large breed dog. Mr. Pratt's mother was bit by the victim dog during the ordeal. I thought long and hard about this whole thing, and my concern is, do I wait for a third incident to occur? I don't take dangerous animal declarations very lightly, but I, this dog has shown a propensity to bite, and thus, for the safety of anybody else and anybody else's dog, I thought it was appropriate to file a dangerous animal letter on Mr. Pratt.
Yes. Yeah, city attorney has a question for you.
Officer Rataba, where in the record does Mr. Pratt claim that the woman in control of the animal, where in the record did he claim that previously to today?
That...
That Ms. Martinez, I believe, had control, that she did not have control of the animal and that she was out with the officers. Did he claim that anywhere in the record prior to today?
The part earlier where he was talking about his mother was bit by the victim dog, is that...
That part I understand, but I'm saying, is there any place in this record where he claimed at the hearing that Ms. Martinez was not in control of the dog or was not in the presence of the dog when the bite happened?
I don't recall that at all, no.
And the council's limited, you're familiar with the rules?
Yes, sir.
And the council is limited to the evidence that's in this record, correct?
Correct.
That's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Any...
The only comment I would make, if you read through the documents on, I think it's page 25 of 68 of the record, something like that, it's actually, there's a supplemental incident report, and it says that it was actually on the knee, not on the hand, and that it was consistent with a large dog. So that's in the record.
That was the victim dog owner got bit in the knee. Mr. Pratt's mother got bit on the hand.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Go forward. Go ahead.
Regarding your question, I knew nothing of Ms. Martinez even being in the room until the decision came out from the hearing officer, because my personal knowledge of being there at the time, I knew she wasn't there. So it was never an issue at the time of the hearing, because there was nobody there to control her inside the house. I didn't believe at the time that this, that was what was supposed to be going on, was that Ms. Martinez was in there controlling my dog.
Your honor, if I may.
Yes, please.
You testified in this matter earlier under oath, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you were asked by the hearing officer, were you there at that time also? And she's referencing when you said they went in unlawfully without a warrant. She said, "Were you there at that time also?" And you answered, "I came walking up the stairs just as this went on."
I came walking up the stairs as one officer came walking out of my room.
Is that what you answered, sir? That "I came walking up the stairs just as this went on"?
It was after the, after the incident already happened, I asked the officer what had happened.
Okay. I'm asking you what you testified to at the hearing, sir?
If that's what's written out, then...
So if that's what's in the hearing transcript, you wouldn't have any reason to disagree with that, would you, sir?
Correct.
And the next question, she said, "So you saw all that transpired, and your answer was right." Is that correct, sir?
I saw what transpired as I got there. What happened before that, I can't speak for.
But, and at no time did you say anything, I mean, the testimony about Ms. Martinez, that was in, provided at the hearing?
Under my knowledge, it was that the police officers, Ms. Martinez, was at the door with the manager, wanting the door open.
Okay. And you had an opportunity, in fact, you were asked under oath whether or not you had the city's exhibits, and you answered that you did have them, correct?
I was showing them just before the hearing, yes.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
If you can, it's limited to argument. There's no additional evidence that could be taken. It's limited to argument by the parties without additional evidence.
You may should have evidence for that.
If you have, you can't provide additional evidence, ma'am. You can't come forward and testify about additional facts that were not presented to the hearing officer. Councils are acting as an appellate body, they're simply reviewing the record. That's by law, that's what they're-
Do you have my doctor's papers saying that I would say by a small dog?
They have the entire record. If you want to explain a particular part of the record, that would really be up to Mr. Pratt to do so.
Oh, rather, Ms. Martinez, means that she wasn't able to accompany him?
Well, she can't act as your representative, if you serve.
She's not, she's-
I understand, but then she's providing evidence, that's my point. You're able to argue whatever you want to argue in the record. So if you want to talk about that particular paper again, you've already brought it to council's attention. If you want to talk about that again, you want to know what I'm doing.
I think, I'll make the motion, I think, these cases are tough because there's not a good answer and there's a bad result. I guess I would tend to agree with Officer Radaba that there is a propensity for violence here. I mean, it killed another animal while it was on a leash, being walked. And so just based on the record, I can't, it would be very difficult if this happened to a child or someone else down the road to say that we had the opportunity to prevent that and we didn't do anything. So with that, I will move to uphold the hearing officer's decision on item number 46, 39.
Sergeant, do you want to speak to him about the outcome and what happens now? Come meet with you outside of the hearing room. Item 40, an assessment of a $500 penalty for violation of the Iowa alcoholic beverage laws, sale to the minor to the following. A is the Star Bar at 2811 Ingersoll. B is the downtown pantry at 2084th Street. C is Nadri Inc., 2701 Ingersoll Avenue. D is Johnny's Hall of Fame at 302 Court. And E is U.S. Gas at 3000 Southwest 9th Street. Is there anyone here to speak on any of the items, 40A through E?
I'll move 40A through E.
Item's been moved.
Six, yes?
Item 41 is a request from Capstone Ventures LLC to rezone 315 Southwest 14th Street, from C3B Central Business District mixed use to PUD planned unit development, and to continue that hearing to December 19 of 2011 at 5:00 PM. Again, the vote this evening is on a request to continue to December 19.
I'll move item 41.
We'd like to make a statement on that.
All right. The hearing will be continued to that date. If you would like to make a statement tonight, we would suspect or hope that you would not make statements of like manner at that time when this hearing comes up. So with that understood, you're welcome to-
Can I just add, though? I guess I'm bothered, we're continuing the hearing. We had this discussion previously at the last council meeting. And because it had been posted, I can't remember exactly what the details were, but we made it very clear that the intent was to continue this to the 19th. And I don't, I know the attorneys here. You weren't at the last meeting.
They were here, weren't they?
We made it very clear, though, that we were going to continue the meeting.
Well, I understand, but it was posted, and if they were not here, it was posted for hearing, and that was a dilemma we had the other night. Tonight is the hearing, not last time. And so I think that we have a bit of a dilemma, Mr. Attorney.
We have an issue with the continuance.
Understand.
The, what, technically what happens on each of these items when they're continued like this, the hearing actually opens to comply with the notice that the hearing was going to be on this date. The hearing opens, and then council decides to move it forward. Our advice, and I talked in anticipation of this this afternoon, I talked again both with my predecessor as well as with Larry McDowell from my staff, and we're very comfortable that probably, obviously, the best practice would be to have the hearing, but if you're going to continue it, to let, because it's open, it would be best to allow anyone who wants to speak, to speak. That being said, as the mayor suggested, there's going to be an additional opportunity on the 19th. And the council's rules preclude repetitive testimony, so this would kind of be one bite at the apple, I guess.
I guess I just want to be on the record, though, that if we allow them to speak, it was clear from the individuals bringing it forward that they were not coming prepared to speak tonight.
If I heard them correctly, though, what they just stated is that they don't, they're not speaking on the merits tonight, but rather on the continuance. They want to speak to the continuance. I mean, is that-
And that's one of the reasons that really probably lends itself to council hearing, whatever it is, because council is going to be deciding to go ahead and continue, so.
With that, who would like to speak?
They weren't at the last meeting.
Hi, Laura.
Okay. Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Megan Felt, and I'm a member of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement, and my address is 1317 8th Street. And I'm here with a large group of people tonight, and I just want to allow people to stand up so you can see how many people are here wishing that you would vote on this matter tonight and not have a continuance. Great.
You're good. Thank you.
As you know, this detention center was proposed in May, and since then, it's been presented at zoning board of adjustment, the plan and zoning commission, and city council, and CCI members have been at every meeting along the way. The planning and zoning commission recommended the denial of the proposal, but we have not yet heard a hearing. People who are opposed to this detention center deserve a space to have their voices heard. And we're really disappointed that we can't have that space tonight. If the proposal is continued today, it will be the third continuance, and once again, our members will leave without seeing action. We have a letter to present to you. We've presented this twice before. It is community members and organizations that are opposed to the ICE detention center, but tonight, this letter has 515 signatures and nine supporting organizations. Who should I give that to?
Ms. Coleman, and then he'll move to receive and file.
I'll move to receive and file.
Then move, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
So as this letter demonstrates, opposition to this ICE detention center is growing. We, as CCI members and community members, stand against the detention center in any expansion of ICE enforcement activities in the Des Moines community and in the state of Iowa. Increased enforcement offers no real solution to broken families in damaged communities that deportations cause. What we want is human immigration reform and a pathway to citizenship.
Can I just ask a question here? We're getting into the merits-
Right.
-of the arguments regarding the detention basin. Are you, is your plan tonight to present this, or do you want to present this at the later date? Is that fair, Mr. Attorney?
I think that's a reasonable-
Are we getting into the merits of the detention?
Well, yeah, that's a reasonable question, so if, under council's rules, council can decide at a later point in time not to hear the same argument.
I will, I want people to be able to be heard at a later date. I'm just asking that you please make that happen on the 19th and not continue it again. We're really disappointed to bring all these people out. People are here from Ames and other cities to talk, and they're not given that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
That, I think that's a very reasonable request, I understand. And we had that debate when we had the discussion about setting the date or moving it to the 19th. We did have that very same discussion, so I understand, and I'm very supportive of that. Looking at your letter with all of your signatures, I think it's really important when you give us petitions like this, that we have contact information for the individuals. And these are just individuals that have been listed here, and that is not typically how we would receive petitions. Okay?
All right, well, we'll try to present that at the next hearing. And thank you.
Thank you. So I will move item 41 to continue the hearing to the 19th.
And we want to thank all of you for coming down this evening, and do apologize to you for the continuance. It is a matter that is, caused some easiness on the part of the city council as well. So thanks for coming down.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make one quick comment.
Please.
Perhaps there's a way the city could notify someone from CCI. It was published in the agenda as being continued. And so if there's a way, maybe we can notify them and save them the trouble of coming on the 19th if it ends up being continued. I don't know what the council's plan is on the 19th, but if there's a way, maybe perhaps we can notify them at least so they don't come to the meeting prepared to speak.
If you don't mind coming down.
Very good.
Right. I think the, they were aware of that this evening. I think that the concern is the continued continuance. You know, let's hear it, let's put the merits on the table, and let's vote on it. So appreciate it. We've got a vote? And move?
Seven, yes?
Thank you all for coming down. Next item is item 42, on the vacation conveyance of a small segment of remaining public alley right-of-way located in the block bounded by Vine, Southwest Water Market, and Southwest Second Streets to the Waterfront Lodging, Inc., and to continue that to January 23, 2012 at 5:00 PM. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? Seeing none, could we have a motion on that?
I'll move item 42, continue to January 23.
Seven, yes?
Item 43, on the voluntary annexation of approximately .768 acres in Delaware Township, Polk County, in the vicinity of 5055 Northeast, 38th Avenue, council communication number Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Seeing none, this has been a long time coming, and with the cooperation of John Rowan of Polk County, and a lot of work done by legal staff, Roger Brown especially, on this, I, if you're ready for a motion, I'll move this.
Anyone in the audience to speak? Seeing none, it's been moved. Item 44, on the 2011-1 omnibus amendment to the city's urban revitalization plans, council communication number 11-747, A is a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this? Mr. Mayor, you've had a number of meetings, it workedshopped, city council on this. Mr. Manager, do you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I did not much of one, other than to say this is an important action. We've had a couple, three workshops, as the mayor mentioned. This does extend the tax abatement and make some other important changes. I won't take the time to review it, I think we've done that before, but we'd be happy to talk about it in more detail if you'd like. I just simply wanted to say it's an important action that's before you this evening with regard to the city's tax abatement program.
I'll move item 44, and I agree with the city manager. This is extremely important for the overall focus on economic development within the city, and I think the, what I'm most excited about is the across-the-board uniform commercial tax abatement that will be there, eliminate some of the confusion.
Okay, items have been moved. Anyone have comment?
Seven, yes?
All right. Item 45 is on asbestos removal at the Southern Meadows, Phase 2, 2800 Southeast 8th Street, resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as ESA Inc. D, Mike Mitchell, president, $46,800, council communication number 11-728, A is approving the contract and the bond. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Seeing none?
I'll move 45A and 45A.
45, 45A has been moved. We have one extra item this evening. It was presented and filed after 5:00 PM on Wednesday, and is a request from council member Hensley to discuss facades and signage around the Sculpture Park. Mrs. Hensley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, there's been a lot of discussion with the subway coming into the Gateway Park. I did have the opportunity this morning to meet with the owners of the subway, as well as the, I could say, the tenants and then the property owner. Had a very good conversation. It's a, really an upscale store, very nice. It's larger than is typically required of a subway to encourage dining in the store, which is unique to subway stores. And as a result of that discussion, it was interesting, because, believe it or not, they have half of the amount of signage that would be, they would be eligible for under the current city ordinance. So what that says is, you know, we really, if that's problematic for us, we need to be looking at signage in the Gateway Park. This is not an issue for this particular building, but again, he's got half of what would be available. And I think we probably all remember that building before the subway went in, and the signage on the side.
It's a lot better now.
It's a heck of a lot better. And I think that, though, it does underscore the need for us if we want to have additional oversight or review of signage and what is available and what's not allowed in the Gateway Park. It was interesting, because I've got pictures here at night to show all of the other neon signs and what is down there in the Gateway Park. And we also have some other development that's going on that could potentially be even more of an issue for us as that comes online. So what I'd like to do is to refer it to the city manager in P and Z and ask for review and recommendations. Maybe there will be some, maybe there won't be, but just so that we have a plan in place and everybody understands what's acceptable, and we'll go forward.
I agree, and I'm happy to have that. I've driven by it several times, and it is a totally different look there, but let's face it, we have more people in the city that can afford to eat at Subway than a lot of the other restaurants downtown, and it's a nice amenity to have if done right. I wonder if the intention is to change the sign ordinance down there, if it's not in our interest to establish a moratorium for two weeks until we get something back, just so nobody tries to beat us to the punch or looking for leverage or, I don't know if that is a worry of ours from the permit and development standpoint, or-
I guess, I understand and appreciate what you're saying. In talking with the property owner of Subway, even though he's got the ability to do additional signage, you made it very clear that he's got the signage.
I'm not talking about him, I'm, you know, I'm-
I just hate to do another two-week moratorium, just because I think that-
I wonder if, Mr. Mayor, council members-
Mr. Manager.
First of all, I think the idea of looking at signage regulations around the gateway, and as the mayor just sort of whispered to me, we may want to look in other areas downtown as well where you have these kinds of issues. I hesitate to mention the Hampton Hotel, but a lot of the discussion around that is on signage, and it may be an opportunity for you to look at that particular issue there and in other areas that are particularly sensitive. So should the council approve the motion, I'll work with the P and Z folks to look at this for the gateway, but for other areas that might be similar in their approach to it.
I think a couple years ago, we looked at- I think, I think a couple years ago, we looked at the East Village, and we did something with the East Village regarding...
That might be a place to start.
Signage, so you may want to use that as a template.
Well, and I'd also add, the facade on the front of buildings, too, would be another issue, because you've got some different things going on down there as well.
We'll do that with respect to the moratorium idea, we'll take a look at that, I'm not sure what's pending right now, to see if there's any really critical issues in front of us. The subway issue was sort of water over the dam at this point, but we will look at that and see if there's a need for a moratorium, and come back to you and suggest that, if that seems appropriate. Otherwise, we will take a look at it, and report back with some ideas on it.
You know, a few years ago, we looked at all signage, went through the signage ordinance and that, and I think it was at the direction of Mr. Ludwig and Larry at that point in time, but we didn't isolate different areas of what signage is available in different areas, so I think it's a good time to look at it again.
I'll move, refer it back to city manager, P&amp;Z.
It's been moved, we've got a speaker here.
I didn't intend, really, to get up, but the more I heard, the more I couldn't stay seated. I'm Joanne Hanover, I live at 1406 Merle Hay Road, and I was looking around for Mike, and I, Ludwig and I didn't spot him. Several months ago, the Board of Adjustment asked to have some updates made in the sign ordinance, and there had been so many things passed that had not been combined, and I asked to be notified when it was ready, but the last time I talked to Bill Gray, he didn't have it. One of your council members told me what was happening, and I've been very patient, it's been a long time, so I just asked that somebody find out where that stands.
You're talking about a citywide ordinance?
Yeah.
Good.
Because we can't look at it if they don't have it ready, and I know they're very busy, I'm not being critical.
Joanne, our staff in the back right now will contact you right now, we'll get the information to you either tonight, or we'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, that would be fine.
Can you give it to me, too, would you?
Mr. Mayor, of course, we'll give it to you.
Well, I think you all know that I represent the revitalization of the Merle Hay neighborhood, and signs are a huge issue in our neighborhood.
You've got a few signs out there.
I know, and like I say, I'm not prepared, I have pictures to show you when it comes up, but it's a real problem, and I'm sure Mr. Meyer has the same problem on East 14th.
All right, Joanne, thank you very much, I appreciate your comment. So I'm assuming that the motion includes the citywide sign ordinance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you probably remember when Mr. Velasquez, wasn't it, we met on this, I don't think it was ever brought to resolution, though.
Yep. All right.
Seven, yes?
Seven, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Hensley, we could add a motion to adjourn. Been moved, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close? None? We sit adjourned, thank you all for attending.